Golden. Hoffman.
Here.
Kaiser.
Yep.
Erman.
Here.
And we know where you have it, she is absent, so here's your form.
We got a form, okay, thank you, please join me in the pledge. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to this world with the beginning of justice for all. Okay, thank you. Any public comment? If not, we'll turn over to the business, uh, to review the building fee review. Rod's here. Rod, I'll kind of turn it over to you, can you hear me okay, or?
Yeah, yeah, we hear you fine.
Yep, we hear you fine, thank you for joining in.
I'll probably share my.
Hearing from your report, yep.
Good, good, yeah. Good afternoon, again, my name is Rod Taylor, I work for Menace Stareson, and I was requested to take a look at your building operations. Particularly, uh, the kind of the focus was three things, one, look at your current financial position of the building fund overall. Uh, look at cost for buying services, and then, uh, ensure that the revenues, uh, that are being charged are covering the required expenses. Uh, overall, I hope that the goal for you guys will allow you to make informed decisions on, uh, the building operations, as well as looking at the opportunity to expand permitting functions, uh, with the expansion of the plumbing and mechanical, uh, services. And then finally, looking at if there's any need to adjust fees overall. Okay, before we get into kind of the specifics of, of the, the, what important to draw highlight to was that come to building operations, there are some very specific requirements, um, and not only is this set in the state construction code that, uh, that the fees that drink from the service are intend intended to only cover the cost of providing the service, it's also backed up by, uh, case law as well. There's been several lawsuits in different communities over the years, uh, for entity, uh, were, um, potentially not charging the appropriate fees for providing the service. And in general, whether it's the state construction act, whether it's the bold decision, whether it's some of these other decisions, the fees that you generate are only intended to cover the cost of providing service, and it can't be a revenue source, right? This come in, I get a permit fee, I'm getting some type of value for that, and I should only cover the pay what it takes to actually provide that service. And so as we think about later on, we get into the depth, or that in mind as we go through this. Again, um, some risk associated with not doing what you're doing, which is to take a hard look at our fee structure, uh, ensure that we're covering expenses. Uh, so, uh, with that, uh, I'll talk about, uh, one of the things that we could use to measure the health of the building is a concept called fund balance. So your fund balance accumulation of resources when your revenues have exceeded your expenditures over a period of time. And in the township's case, between in twenty-five, your fund balance increased from three hundred eighteen thousand to eight hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. So that's a hundred and sixty-one percent increase over that period of time, pretty substantial. And so that range, that annual growth between sixteen and forty-two percent, uh, a year. And in general, if we think about fund balance, fund balance is intended for two purposes. Is for unplanned events, right? So we have a large economic downturn, we make sure we have the resources available that we can continue to deliver service. And the other item is for plan and purchases, um, which we'll talk about that a little bit in a forecast. But that's, when we think about fund balance, that's normally, we think about fund balance for your general fund. Again, building's a little bit different here, because we have to make sure that, um, we're just not accumulating resources. And so, um, accumulating too many resources can be an indicator of an overcharging of our permits, uh, permits, our, our overall, our fees overall. So we want to make sure that we balance that, and that we are in line, um, and that we have some money set, but it's a reasonable amount of money set aside in essence, okay? So the next thing we looked at, um, and, and doing the work here was, was we had to build a forecast. Based upon the history, what happened between twenty-one and twenty-five, um, and what we had budgeted for and what the end of twenty-six is going to look like, what might, right? And we, we never know, but we could use that historical information as a leading indicator of what that growth, uh, might look like, and what that might do for our overall change in our fund balance over a period of time. And by using that historical information, we're able to set a kind of baseline, first year, uh, that says, okay, this is what we think the, the future's going to behold, and then we're going to have some type of linear increase over time. Now, as you know, that can't, it's not exact, right? Uh, there's always unexpected, uh, changes, but overall, it is, um, those things will, will even themselves up, and we can kind of see what that future's going to look like. And so that's how we developed the forecast, um, and how we, how we use that for basis of our analysis. By using that information, we're able to de- develop, develop four different scenarios. Uh, the first scenario is what I call the base forecast, what status quo, if nothing changes, um, what might the future look like? To do that, there are a couple of, of critical items that we had to look at. One was, um, revenues is a big, is a big indicator, right? Because we, we kind of know what expenses are, that's easy to understand, but revenues is really your large variable, because revenues is based upon the people that walk through the door, and we don't know exactly what that's going to be. What we do know is historically, is that those revenues have been going up quite substantially because of, of large growth. And so, for example, um, in twenty-twenty-three, your revenues were two hundred ninety-five thousand. Twenty-twenty-four, they jumped almost a hundred thousand to three, if, twenty-twenty-five, they jumped to four hundred. So you saw this continued large jump, um, and in twenty-twenty-six, we think that they could be as high as three hundred fifty-five thousand. But one thing you'll notice here in this base forecast is that we did use a lower number, three hundred ten thousand. And that obviously has a big impact, right? Because if we use a bigger number, it changes everything, if you use a smaller number, uh, it could be viewed as too conservative. But why did we do that? We did it fun, is that, for example, in twenty-twenty-five, when you had four hundred ten thousand, a hundred thousand dollars more than what we're using for the base here, you had the months in the project, that permit fee itself was two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars for one permit fee. It's an outlier, right? You're not going to have those large projects every single year. And additionally, talking with township staff, um, looking at, uh, changes in the economy, the housing market, um, uh, permit that are, that are coming in, uh, the township doesn't believe that they're not going to see some of that strong growth that they had in the last few years, and I think that's a reasonable assumption. So we did for this baseline, rancid it down a little bit, those revenues from what that trend line is bent, because, um, even though we're using historical information, it's not always a reliable predictor of the future. So we have to use what we think is in our gut, what that futures. But then, again, that sets our baseline going forward, and all the other projections that we're going to talk about are built off of this baseline. We also included in, uh, the remodeling of the office, um, and so, uh, you'll see in the future slides how the impact of this large expenditure of four hundred thousand dollars is this large capital. Again, this is why we have a fund balance, so that we can, um, uh, ensure that we have the facilities to provide the service. The next, uh, scenario we looked at was really the primary scenario, which is, okay, if we bring on new staff, and we kind of have the status quo, uh, status quo growth, are we able to absorb bringing in the mechanic, mechanical and plumbing inspectors, as well as moving the clinical full-time or part-time? And what impact is that going to be? And so that was our setup. But because, you know, as we mentioned, forecasts are, are based on assumptions, we wanted to look at two other assumptions as well, and these are kind of the, uh, both a positive as well as a negative perspective. And the first one was, whoa, what happens if we do bring this new staff in, we have these additional expenses, and we have a market downturn? So for example, if you were around in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when we had the economic crisis, building operations across the state suffered dramatically, because, for example, I was a manager in a community that had extremely high growth in things that you were seeing over time, and then the housing crisis came, and our building permit fees, like, we were having, I don't know, a couple hundred, it wasn't quite that much, but maybe a hundred new homes being built a year, and it dropped almost to zero, right? So humongous change in those, those, but because you already have staff and expenses, you still have to pay those things. So the first one, again, is looking at that scenario again, that if we had two years in a row, that book, we saw reductions of revenues of twenty percent. Now, there are some things we can calculate in the factor, like, okay, your trade inspectors, we can reduce the time that they're spending, which saves us some money, but overall, what happens to that fund balance? And then the last scenario is more positive, it says, well, if those, um, large increases in, uh, permit revenues continues to occur, um, over the next several years, what does the re-? Uh, so again, those are our core scenarios, a baseline scenario, scenario where we bring new staff on, and then a scenario where we have an economic downturn, and then a scenario where things continue to reach out for the last several years. So what does that look like? So the first one, uh, our baseline, um, well, let me make sure we understand the slide first of all. So the, our, our rows across here is our revenues, so you can, for example, see here, we have three hundred and ten thousand, whoops, I clicked the button there, we have three hundred ten thousand dollars in our twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, that's our baseline, and we have our expenditures, and so our revenues minus expenditures give us is our, our net appropriations. And so in this case, in that first year, we're going down by fifty-nine thousand dollars, uh, which then has an impact of our fund balance, and our fund balance get, gets lowered by that fifty-nine, fifty-nine thousand dollars. But overall, on this baseline forecast, which again is a very conservative, uh, look at it, um, the, 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 uh, townships, is able to sustain this building operations. Not recommended now, but if you, just, you might need to do it. You look out here in these future years, first of all, we have this large expenditure in twenty-six, twenty-seven for the new, later the new off. Uh, but then, if we look out in those future years, we continue to see our revenues being less than our expenditures. And while we can sustain this for a little while, we can't do that indefinitely, so in this scenario, you probably want to increase your current fee structure by two or three percent, uh, going forward. But again, right now, I think things are, are stable and fine. The next scenario looks like new staff, uh, the good thing about new staff is that if we look at it, it's uh, we do see our revenues more closely matching our expenditures, that's our ultimate goal, right? Because you go back to the state construct, that's really what people are looking for, is that if it costs you a dollar to provide services, that you charge one dollar, um, for that service, it's a wash, that's exactly what our, our goal is. But we're never going to hit that exactly, so, so we want to be close. And in this scenario, we are very stable, these are, our expenditures are able to be maintained, no dramatic need to be made in that scenario. The next one is our, our strong growth one, and our strong growth one, you can, or we continue to have the, uh, a large increase in our fund balance.
Hey Rod.
Yes, sir.
You're kind of cutting in and out, I don't know if your mic can be adjusted, or?
I'll look that up a little bit, is that any better?
Right now it is, thank you.
Okay, alright, sorry about that. So in this one, we can see with the strong growth, we have this, um, continued large increases in our growth of our fund balance. And this scenario, again, not making any recommendations today, but if you do see the next couple of years to have those high revenues like we've had, under this scenario, uh, reducing your revenues would be, uh, important, and the way you do that is by reducing those fees that you charge. Uh, because again, this shows in this, you know, that our fee structure is out of alignment with what our expenses are. And so this would be something that we want to monitor and make changes, uh, and adjustments for. But the inverse of this, because again, we don't know what's going to happen the next couple of years, if we do see an economic downturn, we quickly see a scenario whereby twenty-thirty, the, uh, township sees the building fund, the building operations actually run out of money. Uh, and so in that scenario, one of two things would have to occur. Uh, one, we would have to either dramatically increase our fees, which is usually not sustainable, because it's an economic downturn, so you really can't necessarily charge more out of it, or, uh, two, we have to dramatically reduce our expenditures, and which is, there's not, which is to do that. And then, or the third option, which is really the most realistic one, would probably be a subsidy from the general fund, uh, to keep this fund, uh, out of a deficit situation until the market rebounded. So this shows the, the challenges in setting fees. Sure, under the state construction act, that fees are only covering the cost of providing the service, there's a lot of variability in knowing what that future's going to look like, and, uh, uh, and, and how that, uh, any decisions you make today might be impacted tomorrow. So we have to make sure that we're taking into account, being somewhat conservative, and any, uh, uh, large changes that you want to make. There's some, so, uh, you know, the ultimate goal of report is to provide some findings or some recommendations that the township board can look at, evaluate, discuss, and potentially make some adjustments for. The one, the first one is cost recovery, and so the recovery is, is that with your operation, is that all of your expenses and all of your revenues go into the separate, the building fund. Uh, and one thing we have to do is that if we want to make sure that our fee cover our expenses, we first have to make sure are all of our expenses in that fund. And if it's, if they're not, if, for example, if you have fees, or excuse me, if you have expenses that are in the general fund, as an example, uh, then we would be potentially undercharging our, uh, users getting building permits, and then the general fund is, in essence, or tax dollars, is in subsidizing this fee-driven operation, and we don't want that to occur. Now, the good news is the township has done an excellent job of making sure that some of those charges, so those charges could be things like utility bills, right, um, uh, that you have, uh, other people's time, liability insurance, right? So you, the township pays for liability insurance, is the building fund getting charged a portion of that, uh, insurance? Uh, other staff's time, so while you're charging people like the building inspector, um, and the clerical staff to that fund, there are other staff that provides some type of oversight. And so this first goal would be, first of all, to review the current cost allocations that are being and making sure that we have a documented methodology, so we don't want to be arbitrary here. So for example, if we started saying, okay, Denny is a supervisor, has some type of, uh, um, managerial responsibilities, and we're going to charge some of his time to that fund, it's got to be based on something. A better example would be utilities. Uh, you're already charging utilities to that fund, that's great, that's wonderful, but what's the basis for that? And if you're just charging fifty percent of the money there, the, the expense there, because the building fund has money to be able to pay for that, well then you're putting yourself at risk, you have to have a reason. And the reason might be, well, the building department takes up fifty percent of the space in the township hall, well then that would be a perfect justification. But if they take up ten percent of the space, from a square footage perspective, then they might be, be. So the first one is to review those current allocations, and then document the methodology that you have, that you're using, and then also identify other expenses that you might not be charging today. So I mentioned the insurance, the, the fee for the audit, uh, different fees for the financial software. So you might be charging some BSNA for the module, but you, oh, are using other modules like the general ledger. And so making sure that we're charging all those expenses to those funds. And then, this becomes critical, especially when we start talking about adjusting our fees. Because if you adjust your fees, for example, let's say we lowered our fees, but we then, all of a sudden, added a bunch of more expenses, then we're going to be out of a lot, make any large changes or adjustments, this is the first recommend, I think it's important to look at. Our, this cost recovery is, right now, for example, on your salaries, you kind of dump a number of those salaries into one line item. It would be is you break that out a little bit more, so that the building administrator, the building inspector, electrical inspector, and then if, eventually if you add the other trades, they all get charged their own line item. The value of that is that when you're doing, then you have, uh, better clarity on the data, and so you can make sure that things are charged in the right bucket. Uh, the next recommendation is regionalism, um, one of the challenges that we have in the, in, in many services provided to our constituents is staffing, um, and it's getting more and more difficult to find people to fill these roles. And so a lot of communities are looking at ways to do regionalism, your staff, right? Because you contract, or the, the county provides your mechanical and plumbing, and so you're already doing regionalism from that perspective. But there are another approach would be is that could you provide, you've already got a building department, building operation, you're already a staff, could you provide services to other entities as well? Uh, and that, the advantage of this is that we're spreading risk, we're spreading cost, uh, and we might be able to reduce fees as well in that scenario. Uh, the third suggestion here is, uh, charges. One of the things that's, the, the way that we calculate building and electrical permit fees is very complex. Um, and there's lots of factors that go into that, and because of that, it's easy to inadvertently miss something, um, when we charge people. And so can have two factors, one, if we charge them, we're not providing good service, and two.
You're cutting me out again, Rod.
Oh, I'm cutting, yeah, I'm not quite sure, I don't know if I can talk, talk, talk louder maybe, maybe I'll keep picking it up. Um, let me see if there's any settings on my side, I don't think there is, but.
I tried to recreate it, it happened last time, I couldn't recreate it, so I think our side is fine.
Yeah, I haven't had a problem presenting to others, but it doesn't mean there's something. Alright, if I just, if I need to repeat something, and then, um, uh, so again, permit fees are, are challenging to calculate, and because of that, it's easy to inadvertently miss a charge, uh, overcharge people. And, and looking at a small, very small sample, so it doesn't necessarily indicate any type of systemic problem or any type of systemic issue, we did identify there were two or three situations where items were undercharged. Uh, and again, if we're going to be doing an evaluation of new versus expenditures, we first have to make sure, are we collecting all the revenues we're supposed to be collecting? Still cutting in and out, or?
Not very good.
Okay, uh, so that would be one of the things, is just make sure that we have some type of secondary permit fees to make sure that things are supposed to be charged the way they're supposed to be charged. So for example, uh, one of the nuances is, um, we calculate building permit fees, is based upon building value, and making sure that that bill correct, and, and that we have all of the different selections selected on our, our permit fees. Uh, again, it's, this is an easy oversight, I see this quite often in different communities, so this is something that's not unique, but it does indicate, like, with everything, if we can identify something we can do a little better on, then let's make sure that, uh, we know better, we do better, uh, and that would include a secondary review of those permit fees to make sure we're charging people correctly. And the last, uh, item on this page is the fee schedule itself. Uh, and looking at the fee schedule, uh, this could actually lead to some of the errors in charging permits, and that, um, uh, trying to improve the formatting of the schedule, so it's more clear and concise, and that serves a couple. It's more transparent if I'm a resident coming in, in terms of what I get charged, and right now the fee schedule can be a little bit difficult to follow if I'm not familiar with you and your system and your process. Uh, and then the staff, it also helps as well, because it becomes more clear and concise to make sure that we are identifying the right fee patients and charging the right amount, so that's an easy item, um, and I think what happens over time is that those fees get it quite often, and then you're using a original document, and, and it's like anything, when you make a copy upon a copy, a kind of copy, of that, the, the, you know, things degrade, and so just taking a fresh look, reformatting that schedule, I think would be a good service to both your customers and then for internal operations. Now, the big question though, is it themselves, and what recommendations potentially do we need to make on the fees? And as I mentioned from that baseline analysis that was done, you know, overall, um, I think your, your, your fees are balanced, uh, with, uh, your expenditures, uh, and you are, uh, remaining in a reasonable margin, uh, over time, indicating that your fees, uh, are in the aggregate, covering your costs, and are appropriate that, that way that they are. Uh, so no, uh, dramatic change need made. Now, like I said earlier, you know, that does, uh, uh, doesn't indicate that in the future something might need to be done, alright? So again, if our baseline and our revenues continue to be significantly greater, we might need to make difference in what's being recommended, uh, here. But when we look a little bit more deep, for example, we look at the individual components of fees, so we have an administration fee, that's a sixty-five dollar, dollar fee, um, I basically broke out just those core administrative costs that every permit that was, is going to have, looked at that to see if it's covering costs, and overall, the sixty-five dollars is appropriate. It might be a little bit low, um, a dollar or two at most, but it would be something that I would recommend needed to be, uh, changed or adjusted. Electrical permit fees was a little easier to analyze, because you have one trade inspector, um, it's easier to kind of break those expenses out, and when you do that, uh, based upon, uh, the number of permits of electrical versus building, and look at the revenue that's being brought in, um, basically it showed that the revenue that's being generated by the electrical permits is covering the overall cost for electrical. So again, no need for changes there. Building permit fees is a little bit different though, and, and as I mentioned, uh, earlier on, uh, one reason is why it's a little bit difficult, it's a little bit more, uh, interesting in terms of coming up recommendations, is you have these one-time situations, so for example, you had that months in healthcare, uh, building permit fees, very, very large permit fees, and so these one-time scenario really, uh, have an impact on, uh, what the data, it can look like, but what we tried to do is try to narrow that down, uh, and, and exclude those one-time events and provide some recommendations. So the first one is related to ICC, so the ICC table is produced by, um, a, you know, international, the code, I forget what that stands for, International Code Committee, I think, I can't remember the name of it, but, uh, all, almost all building, uh, operations, uh, at least in Michigan, I don't know about other states, use, reason that they use this is because when we set a building permit fee, one of the ways that we set that fee, and there's multiple factors, and, but one of them, and the value of the building. And so how do we determine the value of the building? Because if I say my new home is worth a hundred thousand dollars, um, in reality, it's five hundred thousand dollars, and if my fee is being charged based upon that value, within, then my fee that's getting charged is dramatically different. And so what's been done is develop this, this standardized table for building permit fees. And what it does is it look at the construction, and then based upon those different types of construction, it uses a standard square foot, and so no matter where you're at, you can look at that. Uh, the township, uh, uses this table, and, uh, has updated this table on a regular basis. A lot of the communities they work with, this is the number one thing, is they use it, and I ask them what table they're using. And I ask them what table they're using, it's a table from three or four, five years ago. Uh, you guys are doing a great job and you're updating that table on a very regular basis. But the second part of that is, is when are you using the table? And so what I found is what a lot of communities do is if I come in and I present my building permit. A lot of times communities are just taking, I write down on that form, so I wrote down my scenario, I write down a hundred thousand dollars, that's what you use. But if again, it should have been five hundred thousand dollars, uh, who are missing that. So the recommendation here is twofold. The first recommendation is um, as part of your fee schedule, adopt it. So that the building inspector can always use whatever the newest table come up. So instead of coming back to the board and these schedule comes, comes up frequently, it's twice a year. Um, instead of going back to the board and saying, okay, give approval to use the new table, to go calculate these, that's just becomes a policy item. And then the second thing is actually develop a pop to say that the, this table used. Now, there should be some exceptions because there's always some uh, variances. And if deemed it's appropriate not to use the table, that's fine, but they just need to document. So the recommendation here again is develop a policy so that in my scenario of a hundred versus five hundred, you're always using the five hundred. And the advantage of that is we're treating it the same, and everybody knows exactly how that value is gonna be generated. The second component of the, the, the fee that you guys are using is, is this uh, factor. So it uses this ratio for commercial point zero, zero, four, six, two, and then the residential, zero, six, zero. Uh, and this is the same way that the county does it, so my assumption is when eventually back in the.
Hey Rod.
Turkle, yes.
County is saying that that is reversed.
Is it reversed?
The commercial should be point oh six or point oh six, and the residential should be the four, six, two.
Okay, yeah, that, I apologize, that's an error, yeah, slide together. Um, yes, residential.
It's right in the report.
Yep, I got the fee schedule right here, yep, yep, my apologies for that, good catch.
I think it's right in the report, it's just.
Yeah, it's, I, I'm pretty sure it's right in the report, I think I just wrote it down when I got the PowerPoint together.
That's right.
Uh, and so you guys use the same, same factor as the county does. And what this factor is supposed to represent is again, um, you know, based upon that uh, value. Uh, that gives us a dollar amount and that's supposed to cover the cost of providing the service. Uh, and it, and, and because you use the same factor as the county uses. That almost is a red flag in itself, and the reason it is is because your guys' costs are different than the county's. Um, and because your costs are different than the county's, the cost of providing services, then your factor should be different as well. It could be close, but it could be different, right? Because um, uh, I mean, another way to think about this would be a completely different scenario, sewer services. You know, if I live in Traverse City and you, and the Detroit, are our utility bills for water and sewer gonna be the same? Well, heck no, right? Because the cost of delivering services at both those communities is dramatically different because kinds of factors that go in. To uh, providing water and sewer service in a newer community. And building permit fees are the same way. And so we don't wanna just replicate what somebody else does, we wanna use a factor that's specific to us. So we keep the factor system, um, not, again, not making any recommendations to, to reduce it right now. But looking at the data, um, I think that those reduce. So in other words, what it shows me, you guys are more efficient than the county in providing this service. And maybe not surprising, county's bigger, right? They have more square miles to cover, so there's, there's more costs associated uh, with that. And so if you keep that factor, again, we probably would want to look at reducing those factors slightly. But my recommendation in the report is actually use a tiered schedule, which I'll talk about more on the next, uh, next slide, uh, related to those. Uh, but before I do, I'll talk about uh, fund balance. So again, our fund balance is our indicator of this, and as we talked about earlier, your fund balance hasn't. Quite substantially because of the large growth that's occurred to the community. Um, my recommendation would be to set some type of fund balance policy or some goal. Uh, potentially between a hundred and a hundred fifty percent, and so what does that mean? Well, that means that if I have a hundred percent fund balance, uh, and in one year my revenues went to zero. I would still be able to cover one hundred percent of my expenses, right? And, and that's, no scenario is gonna happen, it's probably gonna go to zero, but we wanna have enough money in our reserves. So that we cannot have to make dramatic uh, uh, changes in service during a downturn. But we also don't wanna have such a large dollar amount that cause, causes a red flag. And the red flag would be, are you accumulating so much excess reserves, are your fees too excessive? And so by setting a policy, it helps you then kind of control that and keep that uh, in, in check. Um, and we can talk a little bit more about that thought policy, but generally speaking, that policy would be, would be focused on um. Stricted fund balance, and so you could still set some money aside for future cap. Like event for like vehicle replacements and then things like uh, uh, facility reserves and whatnot. But again, those numbers would be relatively small compared to what you've been doing. So as I mentioned, the next uh, thing I talked about is this tiered schedule. So the, one of the challenges that you guys have with the way you charge building permit fees now, is that you use that same ratio. And so no matter what, if I come in with a project that is worth uh, twenty thousand dollars. Or my project is worth two hundred thousand dollars by construction value. Then my ratio is linear, and so the more expensive my project is, the more you charge permit fees. And then generally that makes sense, because if my, if I'm building a house that's worth two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And Denny's building a house that's worth seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, there is gonna be more time involved in doing that, its inspections. Um, and because there's more time, because it's a bigger, it's more complex, we wanna. But at some point it doesn't become linear, right? And so if I have a project that's five million uh, in value. Is, is my, if my projects, the next project comes in, it's fifteen million, million, is it three times as complex? And the answer is probably not, right? Uh, uh, so a, a lot of communities, including the state of Michigan, use a tiered approach. And so instead of having this linear, which again, the, the size of the value, the fees go up in the same direction. This is scaled down, and so as your projects get bigger and bigger, we still charge more and more. But as a ratio, it's not quite the same. And so what this does is it takes into account the fact projects aren't necessarily three times as complex, smaller project. Uh, and again, that's what a lot of our communities around the state uh, utilize uh, uh, as a recommendation. The question would be twofold though. Um, one question, if I was you and I was a resident, would be, okay. Uh, but what does this actually mean in terms of permit fee? Uh, how does that impact me? And so these numbers are just based upon the one portion of the calculation, which is that, that fee. But it, keep in mind, you still have your administration fee in this example of sixty-five dollars, as well as at least one inspection. Um, of sixty-five dollars is uh, associated with this, and I think you guys are doing normally two inspections. So, but based upon what component of it, um, your current fee, financial example would be eighty-nine dollars for a small permit. State of Michigan would charge one fifteen for that permit, and the schedule that uh, I produced there would be a hundred and seven thousand dollars. You see here, when looking at this, is that your smaller permit fees, the downside to this approach, is your smaller permit fees. Do have a larger burden, so the fee does go up a little bit for those smaller project. But then when you get to the X, then the fee goes down. You can look at that two different ways, because you're putting a more of a burden on those smaller permits. You can also look at it from the perspective of, we also are less likely to be overcharging these more expensive permits that come in. And we are also building a system that's not relying on a few large projects to fund your building operation. Because most of your projects do fall in to a lower amount. So from a revenue perspective, if it could provide a more stable revenue, puts you at risk of somebody saying, coming in and saying, well, why are you charging? Sixty-four thousand dollars, because it's really taking you sixty-four thousand dollars worth of, of time to do this work. And you might have a harder time uh, justifying that.
Hey Rod, on this chart, in talking to our building inspector for the residential. He's telling me that the minimum fee is a hundred ninety-five dollars, not eighty-eight dollars. So what does that play into the one oh seven, one ninety-five to one oh seven, would actually be a reduction?
Well, it would still work the same way because we still have, that's why I was saying before, in terms of we have the administration fee. Cause you're, cause when we come in the door, we have three, we have three parts of the fee, right?
Okay.
We have administration fee, which is sixty-five dollars, everybody gets that. Then we get this fee, in this case eighty-eight dollars, and then we also have an inspection fee on top of that.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, so, and that would be based upon all three of those would be very similar in nature. Yeah, yeah, and I, I, I wasn't clear, so. So overall, one reason why we're making this recommendation is that uh, it provides equity between small and large projects. Surest that overall cost recovery uh, is maintained under a typical workload. So in other words, what I did is I looked at and said, okay, how much do we have to bring in in revenue? Um, and using this new tiered schedule, does it bring in a revenue uh, to cover those expenses? And based upon that, I looked at that, your target is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And this fee schedule based upon some of those historical averages would still bring in that same, where the money comes in. But it still allows you to, to recover that. And then the last thing, as I mentioned already, which is, you know, this approach provides a stable revenue stream avoiding reliancees on unusually large uh, projects. So I threw a lot at you, this is again complicated if you. I think permit process is may have been a little bit poor, but I'd be glad to answer any questions, clarifications. Um, uh, any, any other insight that I can provide.
Well, I think your report was very, very thorough, um, and I appreciate all of your knowledge and insight that went into that. Um, you know, we did, most of us here went through the downturn of two thousand eight, two thousand ten, eleven. And we seen it here in our own department where, you know, there was no commercial, or very little commercial, and very little residential, you know, and we survived the storm. Of course, it's turned around now, fifteen years later, but um. Before, I'd make any recommendations for, not recommendations, but before we wanna. Adopt a different charter or anything, I think we need a further analysis of our, you know, more than a. Lucky we do five permits, all the calculated, I think we would need more, more of an in-depth um, analysis of that. Where we take, go back maybe six months, look at the permits, say, hey, this is what you charge. If you get the state chart, it would be this, so we can actually see what that does to revenue.
Yeah, I, I think it's great.
Then more of a recommendation to the board, and so is that something you guys could do?
Yeah, it is, and I think you bring up one of the point, because there is a, if I was in your shoes, uh, there's a, just, okay. We have a known, right, we have a fee schedule that works, we know what we bring in. If we make a change based upon this schedule, is it actually gonna bring in the revenue that we need to operate? And if it doesn't, then potentially in a situation where you adopt this new fee schedule, and then six months down the road, you realize, oh oh. This is, this was too, uh, we're not bringing in as much revenue as we needed. And all of a sudden you gotta go back in the numbers, and that's not gonna be good from a PR perspective, right? You want some stability there, and so the downside of my analysis is that. Um, I didn't look at every one of those permits and see with, okay, based upon what you would have charged, what would have been charged in the future. Would I use some average values, some median values, right? And uh, it, again, based upon that median value, this is how I was able to get these particular numbers. Uh, but it's not um, as concrete as looking at ever, you know, looking at permits, like you said, for six months. And then calculating out, what did we charge, there's three things I recommend looking at. What did we charge on those permits? Should we have charged, because I mentioned earlier, there were a few that were undercharged in the analysis. And we could look at seeing if there are more of those, and see what we should have brought in revenue. So not just what we should have brought in revenue. And then most importantly, the third thing would be, based upon this new schedule, what would have been brought up? And what that would do is confirm whether or not this is the right number. If you don't put in a situation where you have to make an adjustment. The inverse is true as well, which is, which wouldn't be as bad, but if we were, if this was over aggressive, then you'd be the same. Uh, you know, six months, a year from now, happen to Laura, and then explain, especially if I'm the person that comes in in the springs and pulls permit. And then I come in and pull the second permit and fall, so wait a sec, you charged me way too much in the spring. You know, I'm not gonna be a happy customer as well, so yes, the long and short is, yes, we, lots of data, and then we could come up with that uh, analysis.
So if we, if we did this analysis of six months' worth of permits, adopted the state's tiered schedule. But then we found that this is either too high or it's too low. Can we then adopt, instead of using the ICC's point oh four oh and point oh six two, maybe it needs to be point oh three eight and point oh five nine? To make up the difference? Or?
Yes.
The reverse, if we're not charging enough, instead of putting, adopting, or instead of point oh four oh, you'd be point oh four two or something. Is that where you'd make that difference up on that, on that uh, chart there, or would you make it up?
Oh. Oh, good question, so it depends, right, which is um. Do you want to stay the tiered, excuse me, the, the, the ratios now? Then I think the answer then would be, yes, you could look at making a changes to those ratios. Um, but again, if you think that the. Ratio system has a downside to it, and that downside is for those larger projects. We're overcharging our residents or our businesses, and that might put you in some type of luck situation. Uh, then I would still say that you're probably better off recommending that your tiered structure. But the, the difference would be is you would adjust the numbers, so instead of being, for example, seventy-five dollars as the base, it might go to seventy-three dollars. Instead of being eight dollars for each thousand, it might go to seven dollars and fifty cents. So you would basically adjust your structure to get to that. Stream that you need to cover those expenses and be reasonable. So that, and that's the first question, I guess, let me say it again, if I were, do you wanna stay with the tiered, the, the, the ratio system you have now, or do you wanna switch? If you don't wanna switch, uh, then, then if you don't buy into this approach, then we probably, I can think about that. I don't know if we need to do a six months of, of review, because we would probably just look at that existing. Uh, expenses and see if we need to adjust. I think for right now, my recommendation would be, I looked at, you could probably lower those numbers, those rate, those, those. Uh, we go back to this slide a little bit, but I would probably wait another year or so to see if our, our. Two things, one, see if our revenues do continue to decline as we anticipate. If they do continue to decline as I anticipate, then I don't think you need to make an adjustment to these. If they do continue to increase like they've been, then I think absolutely you'd have to adjust these factors. And the second thing is, is that um, another reason why not to make a change today is this cost recovery component. Because until, until we are hundred percent comfortable with that cost recovery, that we have all those expenses that we should. And we've documented that, then I wouldn't wanna make a lot of large changes. So the, the goal with, with this schedule as presented is. So the, the goal with, with this schedule as presented is status quo. It's not trying to make more revenue or less revenue, it's trying to make the same revenue as what you'd have from this current racial perspective. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, uh, two observations. One is, does anybody go more than what the state ICC, the ICC table is? I, it's allowable to go more than what the state recommend, is that just a recommendation?
Yeah, so the ICC table, again, think about this as in two components, right? And let me go back to this table. The way this table works, if I have a construction value of two hundred thousand dollars. The first hundred thousand dollars is gonna get charged four hundred and seventeen dollars. And then every thousand dollars over that gets charged additional two fifty. And that gets your total fee. But the first question that we have to ask, how did you come up with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And so what the ICC table does, is instead of Rod Taylor coming in and saying, my house is worth two fifty. We're now using an outside standardized source to say, no, you're building a whole bar or a house or a commercial building. And based upon that type of structure and how many square footage, you're probably to be worth, it should be valued, or this construction project should be valued at three hundred thousand. That is it, right? So that it doesn't provide variability, because if I'm gonna work the system. I'm gonna come in and tell you my project was, and if you don't use that table every single time, then I'm gonna get charged by permit fees. And so, but the, the exception to that is that there are cases where there are variables. And I don't know if you would necessarily say that, and that's, in my scenario, where I come and say it's two fifty, the table says it's worth three hundred thousand. You're probably, as a building inspector, not gonna look at the project and say, well, I, it's three hundred fifty thousand. But the inverse of that is probably more likely to be true, which is, I say it's worth, um, uh, two hundred and fifty. The building's, and it says, you know what, I agree, the table says three hundred, but this is a unique situation. A neat, a unique type of, uh, construction, a unique situation, and no, um, that table doesn't apply and they may charge less. That should be the exception, they should normally be making those changes, but if they do, I think you need to give the building inspector that flexibility. To, to reduce that charge. Uh, now, what most communities do, they simply take the higher of the two. So if I say it's two fifty, the table says it's three hundred, then you're gonna do three hundred. But if I come in and say it's three fifty, and the table says it's three hundred, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the three fifty, I'm gonna use the higher of the two. And that's gonna be the basis for the charge. Does that, I'm not sure if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, it does, that makes it fair. The other, you know, we gotta be across-the-board fair. The other thing, I just wanted to, to interject, as long as I've been on the board here. We, we never, we really never had a lot of discussion on the state and the, you know, ICC, the, this table chart. We, we, in the past, right or wrong, have always looked at the county and what the county was doing. And we were wanting to always stay just a little less than the county, right or wrong. So when you, if you're gonna do any kind of a study for us, I wouldn't mind if you looked a little bit, I, I know, I don't know if you can get counties' six months' data. But I'd like to know how we, a little bit more, how we compare with the county on fees and structure. If you're gonna do anything more. Because we've always wanted to be just a little less than the county to offer our citizens a little better bang for the buck.
So, I, I, great question.
Good or bad?
Yeah, I have an answer to that. My first answer, um, and this is gonna, I'm gonna put this as, just trying to make a point. It doesn't matter, who cares? Because it is, you provide the service, and the only thing you have to prepare yourself with is the cost for you to. And, and, oh, so that's the hard.
You're cutting in and out quite a bit, if you could adjust your mic again. And it might be all right or not, I don't know.
Yeah, it could be, yeah. So, but, the reality is this, so while my first statement is true, which is, you shouldn't compare yourself with the county, it's irrelevant. I will say this, as a person that's been on your side of the table as well. There's another factor that doesn't take into account that, and that is competitiveness. And that is, if I am business, uh, in your community versus a neighboring community, I wanna know what costs. You guys are out of line, and your building permit fees are three times as expensive as anybody else.
Right.
The reality is, is that, uh, while that might be the correct number, there's two downsides to that. Downside number one, um, I may choose to go someplace else. So if I'm building a big commercial building especially, which these permits are expensive, I might choose to go down this more expensive. And the second thing, which is probably a bigger reality, is simply the complaints, right? I'm now going around and telling everybody that I do construction for, well, it's more expensive to work in, this someplace else. And so what that allows you to do is at least understand if you're out of alignment. And if you are, then you have a choice to make. One, is you either lower expenses so you can lower fees, uh, or two, just we provide maybe a different level of service. So you're getting more and then being able to articulate that to the customer base. So, again, the answers are, one, you shouldn't care, don't look, don't ask. The second one is more practical, which says, uh, while it doesn't change what you charge, it's good to know to see if you're out of alignment. So you maybe have to make some other decisions, does that?
That's, that's what I'm getting at, because if you take the states, which I agree, it's the way, the fair way to go. But Northern Michigan could be different than downstate, you know, in Wayne County or something.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, thank you.
The state is only doing a tiered system, not exactly the number, we're not adopting the number.
No, I, I know, I, I know, I understand it, it's just a recommendation.
You had mentioned a couple of times that there's some policies we should look at, do you have sample policies you could send us? That other communities have adopted, or do I just go through MTA for that, or?
So the, the one policy that I recommended is a policy of saying, and this is related to.
I think it was the fund balance policy was one of them.
Yeah, yeah, that was one, I can't remember the other one. So the other one was related to, where's, where's it at? The ICC, one here, the, whoops, the ICC table. So in the report as an appendix, I did provide a sample policy for that one.
Okay.
Um, I did not provide a sample policy for the fund balance, MTA does have sample policies, but it, the, um, for fund balance. But they're more geared towards the general fund versus the building fund. But I, it, it only needs to be a paragraph.
Okay.
Frankly, which is that, you know, the township's goal is to keep a fund balance in the building, uh, permit fund to be approximately a hundred, a hundred fifty percent, right?
Okay.
But yeah, uh, if, if, if you wanna, if you, yeah, I, I.
We can, sir, we'll, we'll figure the fund balance.
Yeah, and, and something to me, I could review it too.
I did have another question regarding, you know, if there was a huge downturn, and the general fund did have to supplement the building department for a year or two. When the building department recovered, would they be able to pay the general fund back?
Oh. So.
Kinda like a loan.
I'm trying to think if there's any case law that I ran across, anything else that I've ran across. I think that is a great question. And I think that, um. I don't wanna give you an answer, to be honest with you, cause I don't wanna steer you wrong. My gut says what you're saying is, is completely fair and reasonable. And you could, like you said, you could do a loan. E.
And I mean, it's probably not reality, cause in Northwest Michigan, we continue to grow, and the thirty years I've been here, I've never. We certainly have had downturns, and we certainly had flatness, but we've never been so deep that we had a, we've had to take money out of the general fund, but. You know, you could get another pandemic, you know, the world eyes have been open.
Yeah, my, my only risk, I, I think a risk would be, is that if you are paying a loan back, then basic, what you're doing is you're changing it. From saying, well, how much does it cost for me in twenty twenty-five to come in and get a permit? Versus, well, in twenty twenty, I'm paying back for something, for something that happened in the past. And for me, today, I only wanna care what it costs you today to provide that service, not what it provided you in the past. So I think that there's a little bit of risk in that, and I would probably say that you could probably try, you'd probably be okay, cause nobody would probably challenge it. But I also think it would be, uh, uh, it, 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 it's a little bit on the edge of where I think I would be comfortable with. But it's something you could evaluate.
Not gonna die in that scenario, cause it probably will never happen, so. There might be some other board questions here, Tom, did you have anything, or?
I had questions on that table, but he went through that, that I, I'm in good shape.
As familiar with these charts as anybody, do you have any questions, or?
No, I understand.
Make sense to you, or, does the tiered system seem like something we might wanna go to? I mean, I think if we do, we need the scenario of looking at, see how would it affect us, not just go to it.
You'd have to at least see, go back and do an analysis six months back, I think is what. Let's see which, which direction we'd wanna go, and I don't get Brian's opinion, Connie's opinion.
Yeah, I agree, if we're gonna go that, and you guys wanna adopt that route, we should probably do analysis to see where it's gonna end up. Because otherwise, we could fall in. Contractors, they have an idea when they're bidding these jobs, what permit costs are. So let's say we make big adjustments to those. It's gonna make a lot of guys not happy if they continue to play with that card. So if we're gonna make that change, let's put true effort into making sure that we have the right.
Rod, it sounds, yeah, it sounds like we were, wanna look more into the tiered schedule, but we'd want a six, at least a six-month review. Of kinda how we talked about what we're charging, what we should have charged, and what it would be if we used this chart. And then just see where, where we fall, maybe it's the same, maybe it's a little less, maybe it's a little more, and then make a decision. We have a board meeting the first week of December, first Wednesday of December, I don't know what the date is. But would you be able to get me a proposal?
Yeah.
Just to look, you, you know how many permits we have, so.
Yeah.
For annuals, four hundred, and you'd be reviewing about two hundred?
Like what, the third day?
Hot?
Third of December.
Oh, yeah, December third, I guess, is the first Wednesday, but if I could get something that Friday or Monday before, I know that might probably be Thanksgiving week. So probably the Monday before.
Okay.
That would be good.
Yeah, I, I could do that. The other thing too, is I wanna just, I think the building inspector made a great point, which is, if you do make any changes. So I recommend that you telegraph those out three or four months before they actually go into effect. Because of exactly what, what he said, which is, if I'm trying to estimate jobs, I don't wanna be surprised or to say, these permits are higher. And so putting that schedule, adopting it, and putting it out there, then it won't be going into effect until a certain date, and that, that, that those inspectors are aware, would be a good PR strategy. All right, well, I'll get your proposal.
Yeah, very good, well, thank you again, any other questions, Brian, you got anything, or anybody?
Is six, is six months enough, or do you need to go back further, Rod?
No, I don't think so, I mean, I think, uh, it's gonna show you a trend line, we're gonna cover some slow stuff, some busy stuff, times, so. I mean, unless the building, that six months from today is, is, uh, a, a large variance, for example. Permit values are dramatically different in some time versus another time.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, the six months would be the summer months and all that, when it was busy. Does it get any less busy from now on in, should it be a year? Be better, my recommendation, we should do a year. No? Doesn't change anymore?
Last year we.
It used to.
It used to, but it hasn't.
But it hasn't now, level though.
And it's really not about is, is it busy, question would be, do the permits differ?
You're still comparing apples to apples.
Apple to apples.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, and I don't know, probably more of a Connie question than a you question for Brian. So, right now, we hit, we offer online permits.
Correct.
Can I get a conver, can I get a permit using the ICC table online, like if we? Not right now, you can't, cause it's not.
We don't, the only permit fees are online is electrical.
Oh.
Not in the building, no. It goes through plan review and all that.
I didn't know how this would affect it.
No, no.
So it doesn't, okay. All right, any other questions, Rod? Okay, I'm good, thank you, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was good.
All right, thank you guys, have a good one.
I can read all my scribble. Right now, I mean, we don't, I think we'll get a proposal from him, and bring it up into Sutherland, then we can decide whether to go forward, or how we go forward.
So I, can I just clear up a couple things?
Yeah.
Okay, so the ICC table is a state table that everybody uses. Like Emma County uses the same state table. They might not update theirs as much, because I looked in their system today, and it's two thousand twenty-four, they haven't updated it since then. We update ours twice a year, every time. And actually, the state's levels are low. I mean, a contractor around here cannot build for what they're saying you can build for. So it's, it's a good chart to use. And the zero four point three two and zero six zero, that's not a state number. Those are not, we got those numbers from Emma County, that's what they use for their numbers of, but, like Rod said, you can use whatever number is good for a concrete township. But we've never been told that before.
Right.
We just, that's what we use for the multiplier. So.
Well, let's get his proposal, hopefully it's affordable, go back six months, and just see what it is, and then we know, you know, cause right now, we're. And I, I wouldn't feel comfortable just adopting, changing how we do fix, cause we know how we're doing now. It does, to me, it seems like a complicated formula that we do now.
It's not really.
Probably once a year, I could just.
Because it's all in BSNA, and I don't know if this tiered thing is in BSNA. Right now, we just plug in the numbers, and it calculates the amount for you, which is very easy. And like he said too, is if you, if we would stay with what we're doing, and we use what the state is saying. There, that's a much better way to stay the same, rather than using what the contractors say.
Yeah.
The amount is, because they do lowball what they bring in.
He said they're trying to, trying to.
Well, so what, I mean. I mean, contractors build in a high number for building permits, and I get it, they gotta go chase down the permit, and go chase the inspector, and come up here five times, or go to town. But they're gonna put, when you do a contract for a house, and you put five thousand bucks for a permit, the permit alone might cost you thirteen hundred dollars. You know, but if they can beat you down for two thousand, that's in their pocket, not in the owner, homeowner's pocket. I mean, that's how it works, so that's why they try to do that, I mean, it's just.
But if you go by the square foot, it's the same for everybody.
Right, when it's the same, it's the same, but I'm just saying, that's, that's why some of those guys do that, because that's a thousand dollar bonus in their pocket.
Exactly.
They don't refund the owner.
But, but what we do is, we pick, you know, whoever, like what he said, you pick whoever's highest, you know?
Yeah.
And use that, so everyone is treated the same.
Har side building, two hundred square foot building. Harseide building, two hundred square foot building by square foot, it's fifteen hundred dollars a square foot, where the chart is gonna be two fifty, reality, it's four hundred, if it don't, mine, you know, I go home, but you can't. There's no way you can get a chart for Harseide, because it's just so far, I mean, it's way, I mean, these are class, double class apples. The charts are based on a classy average. But anyway, I think this was good. I'm happy with the report, so. Any public comment?
The fund, the, the amount that you keep, or that is there in the building fee fund, is that something that carries over from year to year? What do you keep in it now, and what is a reasonable amount to keep in it?
Well, he's saying a hundred to a hundred and fifty percent of what your expenses are.
Is the reasonable amount? And, and is, what is it, what did he say you have in it now?
We have about eight hundred.
And what, and
Four hundred.
Okay, so it's about double?
Yeah, right now, we just come off two big years, but we're gonna be putting four hundred thousand, we're gonna be spending that here in the next year and a half, so we'll be back down there.
So they keep that a hundred, a hundred and a half, so a cushion.
Yeah.
So if you do have a bad year or two, you
You're okay for a little while.
Any other questions? Brian, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. You guys, anybody?
No.
All right, with no other good talk for the board?
All good.
Yeah, we'd be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.